We will rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the State of the City Address, City of Helena, January 27, 2020. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the annual State of the City Address. The city charter states, "The mayor shall communicate to the city commission and the general public a statement of affairs and the management of the city each January, and may make recommendations regarding these matters." Our city charter was adopted in 1976, and it states, "Helena, Montana is the proud seat of our state government. It is a community with a colorful past and a vibrant future. There is an openness and basic decency that beckons each of our citizens to contribute to the unique identity. This beautiful city is governed by a diverse, hard-working city commission." I would like to begin by welcoming our new city commissioners, Commissioner Logan and Commissioner Dean. We welcome you, and we're looking forward to another busy year, busy and successful year. I want to thank and recognize all city employees for all they've done to contribute to the success of this city. The city commission and city staff are two parts that make the city what it is. However, we could not accomplish all what we do without the various advisory boards. I want to recognize the members of the various advisory boards that give hundreds of hours of free time to make this city run. We thank you. I also want to especially recognize the members of the Helena Citizens Council. This city commission sincerely appreciates your hard work. It is time we acknowledge the fact that Helena has a vibrant business community. Therefore, we must support those policies and initiatives that will continue to develop a strong and diverse economy. It is very important that we recognize the day-to-day work of the city and not take it for granted. We continue to deliver essential services to our community of Helena, plowing the streets, fixing potholes, responding to emergency calls, patrolling the community, collecting garbage, et cetera. However, I also want to recognize several accomplishments from 2019. This address recognizes key accomplishments in 2019. We reflect on the successes and shared lights to recognize the public-private partnership that facilitated those outcomes. This address also outlines what's to come. The impact we elected officials, our administrators, and your public servants will diligently work towards 2020. By responsibly using public funds, by carefully crafting public policy, I and the city commission will improve the livability of our beautiful city. How? By carefully managing our parks, streets, utilities, and public infrastructure. We will continue to enhance our quality of life by creatively tackling housing needs, managing growth, enhancing public transit, and developing a thriving downtown. We will continue improving our public infrastructure through specific construction projects, including many recreation amenities. We will respect the environments by tirelessly working towards sustainability through new recycling in city parks, new LED through the city, water conservation and protection of water quality. We will embrace new ways for providing excellent customer service. We will find organizational efficiencies to be more responsive to you and to be smarter in how we conduct business. We will grab every opportunity to increase communication and transparency so that you can hold us accountable. We will be humble and learn from our mistakes, and in doing so, articulate how we will prevent making the same mistakes twice. We learned lessons in 2019. In short, our vision for 2020 is to serve the residents of this city with customer service second to none, to improve community conditions for residents and merchants, to improve our public facilities and assets with special focus to our parks and open space, and to do so by being good stewards of the environment and public funds. I will also highlight some of 2019 accomplishments and 2020 goals from each of the city departments. I want you to know that by tomorrow morning, the full text of this speech will be on the city's website. You can get it from there. Some of 2019 accomplishments. The city attorney office successfully hosted the United States Department of Justice visit and tour of our prosecution-based victim services program. Community development. In partnership with the county, created a housing navigator position. This department also worked with M.B.A.C. to obtain the Big Sky Trust Fund grant for Big Sky Connection, an electronic health information exchange that allows doctors, nurses, other care team members involving a patient's care to appropriately access and securely share a patient's vital medical information electronically. This is the first one in Montana. Facilities. Converted majority of the general lighting of the civic center and main fire station to energy-efficient LED lights. Completed the design phase of the city-county building ADA parking lot upgrades. Finance. City received the third consecutive certificate of achievement for excellence, excuse me, the city received the thirty-second consecutive certificate of excellence for excellence in financing reporting from the Government Finance Officer Association for our fiscal year 2019. Financing was obtained from the following three city projects. Sewer infrastructure to service newly annexed properties on the west side financing. The financing for that was through the DNR-C funded tax exempt bond. Downtown parking improvement financing was through a loan with the Montana Board of Investment Program. Fire. The city of Helena co-op is near completion. Fort Harrison Emergency Response Contract was completed, and that broad will be bringing in $317,000 yearly to the fire department's budget. Fire Prevention and Investigation Bureau Inspection exited Building 529. New construction 142. Human Resources. A few college and high school interns were brought in for the summer, and HR office is working on designing a more comprehensive program to include other colleges nearby. Municipal Court. The court welcomed Judge Anna Peterson to Helena Municipal Court. Judge Peterson has hit the ground running and has already made changes with the improved, which improve the daily workings of the court and provide better service to customers. Parks, Recreation, and Open Lands. Open Land is close to completing an update of the Recreation Chapter of Open Lands Management Plan, an almost eight-month process that has involved and engaged diverse interested parties. This process has brought competing user groups together to form common goals and understanding, and will provide the department a framework for future recreation management on open lands. The Park Division worked with Kiwanis and a grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund to construct a new pour-in-place, highly accessible playground, a charity park. The Civic Center. Significantly increased their programming and revenue, bringing in new diverse shows, bookings, and partnerships. Through removals and replanting, we reduced the grain ash population from 54.3% to 52% and completed extensive pruning on trees lined with large mature trees and small trees for formative pruning. Police. The police moved to Building 406 Fuller from 221 Breckenridge. Completion of a fifteen-month process with city and county staff after the jail levy passed. Deployment of full-time traffic unit. First full year of DUI enforcement officer project funded by Montana DOT. One hundred and forty-six DUI arrests and five hundred and ninety-three citations in the first year. Two officers assigned to the traffic unit. Downtown Bike Unit. Two officers full-time downtown. Two officers are assigned full-time to downtown, June through October. Grant came from Walmart for two additional bikes. One officer attended the police bike training, so in-house training can be conducted. Community involvement. Shop with a Cup, fifty children shop with beer for charity and raised $1,000 that was donated to local charities. Five Coffee with a Cup events. Life-saving awards for an adult through makeup. Life-saving award for eight-year-old boy who called 911 and saved his mother's life. Public Information Officer. Held civic events, road closure events, upcoming projects, and more are communicated through Facebook and Twitter, which supports a more informed citizenry. Media has learned to follow our accounts for stored ideas. Public Works. The Engineering Department completed or reviewed approximately thirty infrastructure projects last year, totaling approximately $15 million. The major projects completed last year were front street reconstruction, fee street sidewalks. Utility Maintenance Division successfully implemented a city new service line replacement loan program, completed $83,223 in loans, with more currently in process. Transportation System. Resurfaced Airport Road. Developed and implemented My Helena app for use of citizens to submit service requests. Implement acidic works for operational tackling through work orders. Acquired new snow blowers, which has increased efficiency of snow removal operations. Utility Maintenance. Received payments daily through mails, in-person, online payments, electronic transfer, and over the phone. During a typical month, this office processed an average of over 9,000 payments totaling over $1 million. I will outline some of our goals for the coming year 2020. City Attorney's Office will complete overhaul of animal control ordinance with a new non-criminal enforcement component. Pre-trial diversion program, and will continue to work with Helena Police Department, Municipal Court, and the Office of Public Defender to implement a paperless criminal justice system. Community Development. Work with Montana Trust to establish a community land trust and identify city surplus parcels to be set aside for land trust. Create a Capitol Hill Mall area urban renewal district. Working with Tri-County Fire, the county, and others, the division will be looking at considering the possible adoption of the WUI codes. Facilities. Reconstruction of the North City-County Building Parking Lot to comply with ADA regulations. Finance. Developing consolidated finance budget, procurement policies, and procedures manuals. Quarterly financial reports to commission on funds that are relevant to them or that needs their attention. Fire. Will complete a continuity of government operation exercise including the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, and DES. Perform a workload analysis in the FBIB to determine if there is a need and funding available to expand the Bureau in supporting of the 2012 International Wildlife, Wildland Urban Interface Code. Human Resources. Will work with departments on developing and implementing succession planning. Municipal Court. Work closely with the city of, with the city for a smooth transition out of the courthouse and into the Law and Justice Building. Parks, Recreation, and Open Land. The Parks Division will be working with the Historic Preservation Office to secure grant funding to restore the damaged wood beams on the fire tower at the Fire Tower Park. In 2020, Civic Center will continue to focus on programming and explore a new partnership with a formal request for interest from outside entities. The request for interest in looking for potential third-party operators, partnership promoters, food and beverage management, and naming rights. Police. Citizens Police Academy. Approximately twenty-five participants will be organized by civilian volunteers. Public Works. Water Side Water and Sewer Main Extension Phase One and Two. The project is to provide, the project is to provide water and sewer main to the newly annexed properties on the west side of Helena. The city has a significant groundwater reservation for the deeper aquifer and aquifer not used by the average residents in Helena Valley. The transfer station plans on expanding recycling drop-off sites to promote customers' convenience. Transportation Systems. Expands snow remover surfaces by 49% around the Capitol and the commercial areas. Increase efficiency on stripping and pavement markings. Continue discussion on improvements to the transit systems. Utility Maintenance. Utility Customer Service Division has just begun to offer e-notification of the customer's monthly billing into e-notices, allowing customers the convenience of receiving an email that provides them with the monthly bill amount and other pertinent information, as well as the link to online payment portal. In conclusion, Helena continues to work with many partners, including Lewis and Clark County, the state of Montana, the city of Helena, East Helena, YMCA, Helena Fouchier, National Forest Service, Helena Housing Authority, with Rocky Mountain Development Council, United Way, Helena Regional Airport, and many others, giving up their time and energy. While we continue to work with our partners to improve our growing city, we must recognize that great deal of work is still ahead of us. We must boldly tackle tough issues such as affordable housing for our vulnerable population and public safety while still reflecting the principle of charitable character of our citizens. Together with our partners, we will accomplish these goals and more, while still tending to our fiscal responsibilities and in service to those who entrusted these decisions to us. As the city charter stated, Helena is the proud seat of the state government, and as such, it should strive to be the model for the future of our great state. Ladies and gentlemen, the state of affairs of the city is strong. I thank you, and I look forward to serving you in the years to come. God bless this city, state, and these United States. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, commissioners, you may take your seats up on the podium, and we will commence with our regular city commission meeting.
City Attorney Jordan?
Here.
Acting City Manager Hagan?
Here.
Commissioner Halliday?
Here.
Commissioner Dean?
Here.
Commissioner Logan?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
Welcome to our meeting, and at this time, I would like for us to just have a moment for silence for our falling comrade, Commissioner Nonin. So just a moment of silence would be appropriate at this time. Thank you. Minutes. Our administrative minutes for January 8th were received. Do we have any additions and corrections to make? If not, they'll stand as submitted. Board Appointments. Helena Public Arts Committee Commission Board Appointments. I'm recommending the following board appointments. Helena Public Arts. Reappointment of Nick Lattes to three-year term on H-PAC. Term will begin upon appointment and expires 12/31/22. I'm also recommending City Commission Committee Board Appointments Assignment for the mayor and commissioners. Mayor Collins will be on the Helena Public Arts Committee, City-County Health and Civic Center Steering Committee. Commissioner Andreas Halliday with Mayor Pro Tem, Board of Adjustment, Montana Business Assistant Connection, Non-Motorized Travel Advisory Committee. Commissioner Heather O'Loughlin will be on the Audit Commission Committee, Business Improvement District, and Transportation Coordinating Committee. Commissioner Emily Dean will be on the ADA Compliance Committee, the Audit Committee, Transportation Compliance Committee, and ITNS Board. Commissioner Sean Logan will be on the Audit Committee, Chamber of Commerce, Mental Health Local Advisory Committee, City-County Parks Board. At this time. Any comments from the? No? Okay. Any comments from the public? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move reappointment of Nick Lattes to a three-year term, and the H-PAC term will begin upon appointment and expire on 12/31/22. And commission appointments. Mayor Collins to the Helena Public Art Committee, City-County Board of Health and Civic Center Steering Committee, Commissioner Halliday to Mayor Esmayor Pro Tem, Board of Adjustment, Montana Business Assistance Connection, and Non-Motorized Travel Advisory Committee. Commissioner O'Loughlin to the Audit Committee, Business Improvement District, and Transportation Coordinating Committee. Commissioner Dean to the ADA Compliance Committee, Audit Committee, Transportation Compliance Committee, and ITNS Board. And Commissioner Logan to the Audit Committee, Chamber of Commerce, Mental Health Local Advisory Committee, and City-County Parks Board.
Second.
Let's move in second to Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, Consent Agenda Claims.
Mayor and Commissioner, I recommend the approval of claims this period in the amount of $1,293,197.06.
Comments from the commission? I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of Agenda A to make Consent Agenda A Claims.
Second. Let's move in second to Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Communications Proposals from Commissioners. Any comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I have a few questions this evening for Ms. Howgan.
Ms. Howgan.
Mayor, Commissioners?
Ms. Howgan, on Friday, we got a communication from WGM Group, which had submitted some proposals for a couple of projects that we had put out RFPs back in late November, I believe, involving Cruz Avenue and the Urban Renewal District. There's a third RFP also for land trust purposes as well. So I just had questions on all of those, but I guess we can start with the WGM email, which on Friday, as far as I understand it, WGM Group is withdrawing its proposals to do work on the mall urban renewal district and the Economic Development Services for Cruz Avenue. Is that right?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, that is correct.
And so maybe let's start with the URD. Do we know why WGM withdrew its services proposal for the URD?
Ms. Mayor, Commissioner, WGM did not identify a reason in their email. In my conversations with Mr. Campbell, he indicated that he withdrew his proposal because of the, and I'm just kind of paraphrasing, the apparent turbulence with regard to the administration within the city, and they did not feel comfortable moving forward and working with the city until that had resolved itself.
So with regard to the URD, what are your next steps then if we don't have a current contractor? Do we have a backup?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I was in touch today and over the weekend with the next. We had three responses. The second responder, I was in touch with them over the weekend. I had a conversation with this afternoon. They're going to be sending me a scope of work sometime tomorrow, and they are more than willing, and they are still excited about working with that URD. The name of the firm is Next City, is from Mount Ogden, Utah. They've done many URDs and TIFs across the country, and they have considerable experience in economic development work.
Their proposal had indicated that they, because of their lack of familiarity with Montana-specific URDs, that they were going to need a subcontract in Montana. Did they propose who they're going to subcontract with, or how long it's going to take them to locate that subcontractor?
The subcontract that they were looking for was to put together a statement to Blight, and they under, as I understand in conversations with them today, they can do a statement in Blight, they just didn't know if each jurisdiction state had a preference for the local government, government does that statement of Blight, or that can be done by a consultant.
So in terms of the timeline for a URD, in my understanding, is we're relatively tight, and we're later in the game than we would want to be at this point. Can you walk us through the timeline and the steps? And when we would be ultimately approving this URD? The reason being that we expect development on the mall site to occur this year. And if we want to use the base level for taxes, as a snapshot of raw land right now, it needs to be approved this year. So walk us through how we guarantee that we're going to get that URD into place.
So, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, you are correct that the URD has to be a, the URD plan and the resolution creating. plan and the resolution creating, the ordinance creating it, has to be done by December 31st at the end of the year. If the contract negotiations are successful with Next City, we can get them started next month with the process. So the first step in the process is to do proposed boundary, and after that, we start working on a resolution to assess me a statement of blight. We also do some neighborhood meetings, asking for stakeholder meetings as part of the RFP process, as it was drafted, so those meetings would occur. The last URD that we did went from March, I believe, to November, so that's about five or six months. The next step after that is that they start drafting the plan, they have other stakeholder meetings with regard to setting the goals and the goals and objectives of that plan. Once that's completed, that has to go through the Planning Board, and the Planning Board has to concur whether or not it is in conformance with the growth policy. The growth policy by that time will be updated by the Commission as identified neighborhood centers, and the Capitol Hill Mall is a particular area of study, so there should be no problem with that issue. And then following that, then we'll go to the Commission, we'll of course have public notifications based on the proposed URD boundary.
And you're comfortable we're going to get that done by the end of the year?
Yeah, I'm comfortable these, these folks have done this, I'm comfortable we have done, it's pretty perfunctory. Just doing the URD itself, it's a pretty perfunctory process. The community, the community stakeholders are the big part of that process, and we'll be working with the consultant, and we'll be working with the developer. In fact, I'm going to call him tomorrow to let him know this stream of events, I didn't, can't find the right word, so he, to make sure he's comfortable with this also.
And so, I know previously, we had had ongoing discussions with the developer of the mall site, specifically because there was interest by that developer in using certain TIF funds for the buildout of Vandalay and Sanders Street and maybe some other public improvements. And there'd been discussions of back and forth between the city and the developer on some things, changes in development patterns, whether there would be underground parking or raised parking, or the manner of location of buildings on the parcels, which the city can't necessarily control, but that the developer might want to cooperate on. Are those discussions still ongoing?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, yes, they are. In fact, we had a pre-app today with one of the future tenants of the mall site, that would be Stockman's Bank, because they're going to purchase a Bison's, Bison Engineering site and purchase additional money, additional land from the corporation. It's not just Dick Anderson, the name escapes me, but from that corporation. We are also working with Mr., with the engineer, who is Greg Worth, about Vandalay Road and the improvements on Sanders Street. In addition, he also was looking for TIF money to help pay for parking structures that would be public in nature, and that would probably be on the east side of Sanders Street. The west side of Sanders Streets will be more of a pad approach, being landscaping and the requirements. The next, the east side of it will be more lifestyle center that would have both housing and office and other amenities. So we are in conversations with Mr. Anderson, and we are in conversations with our engineer, and we've also been in conversations with SMA, their architects.
What I'm most curious about, though, is there, when WGM had still been working with the city, even if somewhat informally, there had been discussions of the actual layout and the development of that property, whether buildings would be pushed to the edges of the property as opposed to the middle, how many parking spaces one would have, sort of what it would look like. Are those conversations actually still happening? Because it was my understanding that those have fallen apart.
So, Mr. Halliday, or Commissioner Halliday, I have never been part of those conversations, so I couldn't tell you if they were falling apart or not.
Okay, so at least as of today, with no WGM and no Manager Cortez here, you don't know of any conversations going on with the developer?
I know that there have been conversations, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I know there have been conversations going on with the manager, I just not have been party to those conversations.
Are you, would you consider reaching out to developer and discussing that with them since we don't have WGM Group or Manager Cortez here right now?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, as I indicated earlier, my intent tomorrow is going to reach out to Mr. Espanza and Mr. Worth and begin those conversations, and if see what drawings or what images they had been working off and want to continue those conversations. It's from my experience with Mr. Anderson, Mr. Espanza, and the developer, that they have always been open to some of the designs and desires of the city with regard to newer design, and that's also been expressed by their architects also.
Great. I mean, I'd love to hear about what those conversations are like, because my concern is, from what I've heard, the city's delay has resulted in that sort of passing us by, where we had this window of opportunity to help sort of in the design, in how we wanted this project to work as a symbiotic relationship with the developer, and at this point, the developer has potentially moved on. So I'd love an update at our next meeting as to what your conversations yield.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I'll be more than happy to relay your concerns with regard to this matter.
On the Cruz Avenue piece, do we have, did we have a backup proposal with regard to Cruz Avenue Economic Development Services?
With regard to the Economic Development Services, we had a backup proposal, however, Next City and the other applicant did not speak to the drawings or representations of Cruz Avenue, but they did speak to all the other elements of that. So the design elements, they did not speak to.
And so what are the elements that they are looking at?
There are, the elements they are looking at is doing a revitalization plan, a visual plan. They're also looking at identifying public-private partnerships, also working with stakeholders who are interested in working with the downtown. They have considerable experience working in larger communities, in not only opportunity zone areas, but also renaissance zones, we don't have that in Montana, or other zones to look at those types of projects. So all those other elements that were identified in that RFP, they responded to, they just did not respond specifically to the Cruz Avenue designs.
So I'm just confused. Are they doing Cruz Avenue, or they're not looking at Cruz Avenue?
They, they had another proposal for Cruz Avenue, so what I talked to them today to see if they were still interested in doing that, and if they're not still interested, we are preparing another quick RFP that would probably have a quick turnaround. We have not found out about the Main Street Montana program yet, and we're not necessarily waiting on that. But we are using the basis of that application as the RFP process to go back out to focus on Cruz Avenue.
So we did an RFP in early November, then we did another RFP in late November, and now we're doing another RFP for Cruz Avenue?
We, to my knowledge, there was not an RFP early in November, there was an RFP done in the middle, I think approximately the middle of November, November 18th, or somewhere around that neighborhood, similar on Christmas. I'm not aware of a previous RFP that was done. So this would be just a call to consultants who live here in Montana who do design and visualization work, and see if they are interested in doing that for Cruz Avenue.
So we're just contracting with someone to draw pictures of Cruz Avenue?
Or to also work as part of that visualization plan, and also that revitalization plan, that were elements as identified in the RFP and also identified in the Main Street grant.
So my understanding from WGM's proposal, that it was looking to do economic development work specifically on Cruz Avenue, looking for interested parties, looking to really look and focus on that street. So on one case, we had drawings, we had potential plans for a streetscape itself, but they were also looking specifically at who might be interested parties, how do we actually facilitate, you know, these partnerships between the city and private developers, similar to like the Bus Depot? Is that the type of RFP that we're now putting out?
Those would be the elements of the RFP, are people doing the revitalization plan. We also will be working with MBACK, I talked to Brian Obert Friday afternoon, to see what assistance MBACK could also help us and help us bring to the table.
And so that's one piece of Cruz, is the economic development side, but, gosh, it might be three years ago now, there was a land use study done in order to determine the city actually owned the land under Cruz, and it was probably closer to two years now, the city did an actual, like, visioning process with a number of interested stakeholders for shaping of the street, because we know that there's no utility services, at least under significant portions of Cruz, if we're going to be looking at overall the development of Cruz. So while I'm optimistic, but incredibly cautiously optimistic, that we're finally going to get a contractor who's interested in working on these things to start working on it, what are we doing internally? Because our work plan this past year said that we were going to get together an actual timeline, a plan, steps that we are going to take with regard to how to move Cruz from what's a functional zero right now to getting it someplace where we can make it developable land, that the city is going to be a partner in economic development. So what are we doing internally in community development, potentially in public works or engineering to, to look at those issues?
So we're working, we were working with Manager Cortez on this RFP for Cruz Avenue. We have also contacted Surveyor to see if he can survey what intentionally we do own. We do not have an existing survey for underlying of the land ownership for the city-owned property, which was a step that was identified in the RFP, and that, there has been some surveying work, but not a lot of surveying work. I do not know of any improvements. I'm not aware the Public Works Department has identified Cruz Avenue as a priority with regard to any infrastructure projects, or if it's on the CIP, because I have not seen the current CIP as it's designed for projects. So I would imagine moving forward with those steps, finding out. To my knowledge, I don't know that there is a scheduled project for Cruz Avenue right now, but we will certainly work to see if there is one, to see if it's on the city's...
So I don't think anyone thinks that there's a scheduled project. I think every time we've discussed Cruz Avenue, one of the impediments that's always been brought forward, and it's basically been used as an impediment, is there are no utilities. And so the response from the Commission has always been, well, let's, let's do that, let's look at a preliminary engineering review, or whatever we need to do in order to identify what are the impediments, and then the next step of how do we circumvent them? Because Cruz Avenue is a priority. And so we know there's no plan right now, and we know there's no discussion on that end, but we're looking as a holistic question, right? We've got the economic development piece, and thankfully, we hope we have a contractor who's going to push forward with that, including surveying and all the other things that have all been brought up in the past for the last two or three years. But we also know there's utilities, we know there's streetscape issues, we know there are just other matters to be discussed with Cruz. One of the things we had to do was get it off the urban routes, we got it off the urban routes. And so my question is, I'm looking for tangible explanations. Back in, back in September, I said jokingly, but not so jokingly, that I think I'll be dead by time Cruz Avenue actually gets a plan for redevelopment. Every time we talk about it, it feels like we're, we're just spinning in circles on it, and I'm just curious when we're going to hear an actual tangible, here's just the timeline. I, I mean, I assume we're not going to see prices for pipes for a long time, or prices for a streetscape change, or this and that, but I'm not clear that the conversations are actually happening between the interested parties, whether it's Public Works, whether it's Transportation Services, whether it's community development, to even figure out how to begin tackling those questions. And that's what I'm trying to get tangibles of, this is what we're going to do in February, and this is what we're going to do in March. Does, does that make sense? And what can you give me on those updates?
So, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, what I am proposing, that we would get together with Public Works and maybe by February, put together a work plan relating to that. By then, we'll know if we have a consultant, we'll know roughly what steps need to be taken, and then we'll move forward on the steps, if that is what the Commissions desire. We will also have the availability of tax increment finance money to help pay for some of those, if they're not currently programmed in any other budget at this time. I don't have any money for paying for doing a Public Works project.
And I appreciate that, but we don't even know what a Public Works project would cost, right?
The rough estimates that I have heard is somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000.
To do the installation of infrastructure in the streets of Cruz?
Water and sewer up to a certain point in Cruz.
Yeah, I mean, I think that sounds even low, but, and it's the first number I've ever heard, but, you know, I don't want to babysit and micromanage this project, that's not the Commission's role, but I will say, for three years, we've sort of heard the same descriptions of the Cruz project over and over again. And so in February, mid-February, I'm going to ask you again, what steps have been taken, and what are the next steps? Because we really do need to move forward. This is an incredibly important project, and has a lot of potential money on the line, it has a lot of opportunities to change down the, the streetscape of downtown Helena, the economic development of downtown Helena, the master plan wanted housing in downtown Helena. Cruz is a perfect place for the city to partner with private developers. We saw that there's interest in it with the Bus Depot. We had two or three other plans that didn't get approved, and we've got land that those plans could, in theory, go on in some way, and this has been prioritized. So I'm just, I'm asking, can we get a guarantee from you that there's actually going to be a plan, a description of the work, and really see people tackling tangible steps in the near future?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, if the Commission has identified this as a priority, and if I can tell Public Works and Transportation Services that this is also a priority and we need to get together, then we will try, we will put something together for you to at least look at mid-February.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just looking at our, our priority chart. I mean, that's all I can go off of, is what's actually on paper. And it says that Cruz Avenue development is right there, and we're supposed to be working on the larger economic development projects, housing, land trust, the overall development and scoping of this project.
You want to step up?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Chris Cooley with Finance. So the CIP is on the agenda for February 5th for the admin meeting, but there is a million dollars scheduled in both FY '21 and '22 for Cruz Avenue, as of now.
That's great to hear. I mean, I think money's always been less of the issue at this point, as even just understanding what we would do with that money. We don't have any answers on that, and haven't gotten them for two or three years now, but I appreciate knowing that there's actually money in the budget there for that purpose.
And that was news to me. So that shows that we need to have better communication within the three departments in finance.
So again, I'll just go back. Can I, can I get a guarantee, at least from you to me, that by mid-February, you're going to be talking to these other departments and figuring out what the steps that need to be taken are?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, you have a guarantee from me, and I have never willingly tried not to, so we will have that conversation, and we'll schedule for an admin meeting.
The last one is just the land trust. Mayor Collins mentioned it this evening, and on the prioritization, all it calls for is identifying one parcel in the city that would be put into trust, not, not with the city as trustee necessarily. I think Trust Montana had put in a, or a proposal in response to an RFP that went out. What's, what's our status on putting a parcel into trust?
So, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, we are working with Montana Land Trust to see what parcels they would be interested in assisting us with. So far, they have not identified any of those parcels, so we'll have to either go back out and find other parcels that didn't make the list, or we don't have a lot of developable land for housing within the city that is easily converted until it's, for example, the Chamber of Commerce, as we mentioned, that has issues involving with it, some of those other parcels.
And I mean, Locky Park has been discussed for three years now. We've never gotten a clear answer of why Locky Park, for example, the adjacent piece on the east side of the street. So I guess we already received a sheet of properties that were identified as potentially developable properties, spanning to properties... properties that were identified as potentially developable properties, spanning to properties that are never going to be developable within the city. Some they're going to carry with them decisions that they would never be used irrespective whether they could be developable or not. Where where are we on that? Are we just sort of in limbo? Are you going to bring those back to us at some point? They were sort of coded green, yellow, red. It seems like we've bitten off most of the greens, so the yellows would be the next discussion. Are those being worked on? I mean, I know, again, we've developed impediments and identified impediments with those properties. But most of these problems have solutions. And so have we developed potential solutions for them, and have we come forward to actually? Or have you developed a plan potentially that can come forward to the commission and say, here, here are the problems. Do we want to, do we want to tackle these problems? Are some of these not worth tackling? What are what are we doing with those?
So, Mr. Mayor Commissioner, I have assigned two members of my staff to work on identifying parcels that we're going to bring forth in the commission with regard for consideration. You are correct. Some of the greener parcels, we've already identified and probably have taken care of most of those. I don't have that list in front of me. Had I known I got questions I could look at. There were several yellow parcels that need to be done. Locky Park, for example, needs to get a release from the previous, the family who gave us the park, because there is a version clause. There also needs to be a subdivision process for Locky Park. Once, and there's also the the concept that it was dedicated as park land. So there is that further complication with regard to park land.
And we've heard about all of those for two or three years now. And what I'm trying to figure out is, when do they actually come to us? So that we can say, you know what, don't do Locky Park. That sounds like too much work. Do Locky Park. That sounds like a good idea. Don't do this parcel. Let's do this parcel. When are we actually going to get to those? Because right now, it feels like every time we bring it up, we pick a certain one, and we say why it why it would be hard and difficult. And I'm just trying to figure out why it's taken two or three years to get to some of these.
Mr. Mayor Commissioner, we we have been busy in community development, and I don't think there's any denying that with the work that we did last year. With regard to moving forward with these land parcels, we'll put together a work plan if that is your desire. We have not been tasked with putting together a work plan and bringing those forward, but just identifying those parcels that were available. Knowing that that is your desire, we'll put together a work plan.
Well, I guess, I mean, I'm just confused as to how we get a parcel into a trust. We don't have any parcels, but we've identified potential parcels. It it just, it seems like we're just stalling out. And so I mean, help me here, because two years ago, we asked Community Development, do you need another person? How much more contracted services do you need to tackle some of these projects? And the answer then was, no, we don't. We don't need more capacity when the commission thought maybe Community Development did. And now we're hearing we don't have enough capacity. So, I mean, if there are resources the commission can provide to tackle these kind of things, let us know, right? That's why we we put out RFPs for some of these projects that it didn't appear Community Development was equipped to take care of. So what do we do for you?
So, Mr. Mayor Commissioner Halliday, during this previous budget session, we did make a request for a housing specialist. That did not get put on your agenda.
Okay, but we're not talking about a housing specialist. I I talked about a land trust here in Houghton.
That person would have been able to assist on housing. So yes, we can identify those needs, and we are working with our contracted services, finishing up the growth policy, moving on through those priorities. If the commission desires that that's the next priority for the Community Development Department, we will get a consultant to assist us with that process.
Again, what I'm confused at is, I see it on our list of priorities already, and that's what I'm trying to figure out is, I say, we say it's a priority, and then we're told we have to notify you it's a priority. I I'm just, I'm confused how this works.
Mr. Mayor Commissioner, it's not so much that we don't recognize that it is your priority. It is a question of which priority we have to address next, and we are told to address next. We are working as hard as we can on all these processes.
So, what are your next updates? What are your next steps then on? Yes, or is, I mean, tell me, is it on hold for the indefinite future in your mind? Is it, are we going to get updates on tangible actions by February? March? I'm just, I'm trying to put together when I can expect to hear these things, because if I don't, three years go by like this, like happened last time.
Mr. Mayor Commissioner, we just did the, we have been in contact with the Land Trust. We provided the list. It was our intent sometime this month to get back in touch with them to see if they had any desire to move forward with any of those properties in a manner and such. If you want to go through those properties with staff's recommendations, Habitat's recommendations, and say, we want to get rid of these for even your consideration, we can do that at an admin meeting, and we can prepare that information. But we also have a partner in Montana Land Trust. If they don't feel comfortable moving forward on a piece of property, then we'll have to find an alternative partner to help us formulate that land trust.
But, I mean, and tell me if I'm wrong here. I mean, I I chatted with Trust Montana, and what they informed me was, they're just waiting for us to specifically say to them, here is, here is a parcel we want to put into trust, and here's the paperwork.
So that has, Mr. Mayor Commissioner, that has not been my conversation with them, and I will speak to Hermione tomorrow and get some clarification on that.
Okay. Because when I chatted with them, they said we're just waiting on you guys to actually do something.
And that that is not my recollection, but that's what I've been told by staff, so. I will check on that tomorrow, and I'll call the director myself.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question of Commissioner Halliday? Is that the the list that you're talking about with the green, yellow, and red? Is that the list that was presented to you all in December?
When I mentioned the green, yellow, red, I mean, yeah, that list doesn't include all of the properties the city owns out there, but in terms of trying to identify even one parcel, right? It's not a difficult thing. We locate one parcel. We say, hey, Trust Montana, do you want this parcel? Do we think it's developable? Can we get it into trust? Right? We're not going to be trustee. So I'm just trying to figure out, if that's something we want to do, it should be a relatively simple task. I mean, it may take one or two months, but once we get there, we get there. And so that list is an easy baseline to say, hey, there's six, there's six properties out there. They've got issues. Maybe we don't want to deal with some of them. Maybe some of them are too much to to tackle, but here are three that are worth looking at. Let's look at them. We've never gotten to that point in order to even say, hey, Trust Montana, will you take that? So we're one step behind. But we've never just gotten to that point. So it'd be, it'd be a good thing for us to actually have a plan if we're going to
Any other comments from the commission? Yeah, Commissioner Halliday, you are on the roll today. Okay, um, report from the city attorney?
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, one update. Today, I got an order from the United States District Court for the District of Montana in the Helena Hunters and Anglers, Montana Wildlife Federation, Alliance for the Wild Rockies, and Native Ecosystems versus the United States Forest Service. This is regarding their challenge of the Ten Mile South Helena project, a a oral argument on all of the parties' motions and cross-motions, and there are many of them. For summary judgment is going to be heard on Wednesday, March 18th at 1:30 in Missoula. And so that's mainly just an update as to where we stand in terms of the procedural standing of the case. No decisions have been made. But that that oral argument will be a critical step in the court deciding how to proceed with the case. I suspect it will be decided on motion for summary judgment, one way or the other, and if it goes for the plaintiffs, then it will proceed to trial.
Litigation strategy?
Nothing to report on that one, Mayor Collins.
Thank you. Report from the acting city manager?
Mayor and Commissioner, I only have one thing to report tonight. Wayne Olberg has been offered and accepted the position as Chief Financial Officer for the City of Helena, and he will start effective February 18th.
Thank you. Is that it? Thanks. Communications from Helena Citizens Council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. My name is Dylan Klatmeyer. I was just recently elected as Chairman of the Helena Citizens Council at our meeting last week. The Citizens Council held its swearing-in ceremony for new representatives that were elected this last fall, and we are excited to announce that all of those neighborhood district positions have been filled, and so for the for the first time in a while, the HCC does have full representation, and we look forward to working with the commission and the city in the coming year on many of the issues that were brought up, issues and opportunities in the state of the city addressed today. There are a lot of opportunities in Helena with, you know, our growing city with a new 10-year growth policy being implemented. The HCC really looks forward to taking an active role along with you in providing perspectives from the various neighborhood districts on, you know, how the growth policies and some of these other hot topics in the city advance. So, the complete updated list of district representatives is available on HCC's website, so we encourage the public to check that out, see who your HCC representative is, and get in touch with them about the issues that are important. The other executive team members are Sumner Sharp as Vice Chairman. As many of you know, he was the chairman of HCC for the past four years, I believe. So we're glad for longevity that he'll be sticking on the executive team. We also have Nancy Perry as Treasurer and Meg Bishop as Secretary, so the executive team does look forward to working with all of you and with the city staff. With that, we'll be taking a more active look at what the city commission agendas are, what the administrative meeting agendas are, and we do look forward to providing advice, providing information, answering any questions that you might have. You know, Mr. Mayor, as you were bringing up the the city charter, the HCC is in the city charter as an elected body of neighborhood representatives to advise the city commission on issues related to the budget and the future development of the city, and we look forward to fulfilling that. Are there any questions for me?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just say congratulations on your new chair position.
Thank you. Our meetings are monthly, the fourth Wednesday of each month here in this building, just down the hall at 7:00 PM. We'll be sure and invite each of the commissioners to attend, hopefully, at least one meeting throughout this year, so that we can get your vision on on how you see that we can all work together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Regular items, consider acceptance of the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Director Hertz?
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners. You received a draft of this report at your January 8th administrative meeting for your review. Since that time, myself and staff, as well as auditors, have been reviewing it and have made some grammatical changes and formatting changes. Nothing substantive to that document. Upon your acceptance of the document tonight, it will be uploaded to the website tomorrow, emailed to the Government Finance Officers Association for review, as well as the Montana Local Government Services Division, and sent to printers to have hard copies made for those entities that have requested hard copies, as well as yourselves, if you desire those, so that we can meet our January 31st deadline.
Thank you. Questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of questions. On page 33 of the agenda, and it's A10 in the actual document. Yes, that's it. So it says the future capital projects equal an increase of $5,368,815. I'm wondering, I looked back at last year's, and that number, when you subtract, that's for the full number, and then you subtract the the other items that are there. Last year, it was $1,769,600, and I'm just wondering if you know what that 200% increase would be for? And if we
200% increase in what?
So, so in 2018, the the net position increased by 1.7 million, basically. And then this year, it's increased by 6 million, but when you subtract the the other two, it brings you to 5.3 million about. I'm just wondering what that difference is and why it's so different from one year to next.
A lot of the difference in is business-type activities.
Yeah, and I think it's for that future capital projects.
I would guess, so I would have to to dig into the details and get you a more
That'd be great. Yep. And then, my second question is A12, which in the agenda packet is page 35. In there, it says that we, for water and wastewater mains and alley easements, were added in an amount of 441,000. Are these for ADUs, or do you know what those?
ADUs.
The accessory dwelling units? And someone else might be able to answer. I'm not sure, but it says, it says stormwater, water, and wastewater mains and alley easements were added in the amount of 441,000. And if you need to get back to me, that's absolutely okay.
Oh, okay.
It's on the bottom, the fourth bullet point.
Those are are normally from from new developments.
Okay, so I guess I'd, and this might be a question that someone can get back to me on, if we normally pay for those, if people are are adding an accessory dwelling unit?
Those are donated.
Those are donated. We donate them.
No. No, on the new developments, it's part of the development cost that the developer bears, and we have to add them into our fixed assets at their fair market value.
Okay, so that's what they have paid.
I will verify that for you, though.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. And then just my last question is B22, and in the agenda packet, it's 63.
Okay, B22.
Yep, and this is just a clarifying question. So I noticed that recycling is not included in the solid waste description, but it is included in the transfer station description. It's my understanding that we pay for recycling out of the solid waste assessment and the transfer station out of the tipping fees. Is there a reason that the recycling wouldn't be included in the solid waste?
It's the way we have historically combined those funds and reported them, I believe. I am going to double-check on that one, too.
Perfect. And that, that's, and I understand that those are pretty specific, but any information is appreciated.
I appreciate that. I will get you answers tomorrow.
Thank you.
Comments from the public? Thank you, Director Hertz. Oh, jeez, sorry. How entertaining a motion.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move to accept the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Second. Let's be moving. Second, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries forward at zero.
Thank you. Consider final passage of an ordinance amending the Helena City Code to allow for the discretionary waiver of city fees on affordable housing projects to be constructed in the City of Helena. Director Houghton?
Mayor? Mayor, I apologize. That's a typo on your staff agenda. If you look at the agenda provided to you.
Look at that. You messing with me?
My apologies.
Okay, I see. I saw she she looked really lost just Okay, I see, I saw she, she looked really lost just now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, so according to this agenda, public communications. So, is that it?
No, Mr. Mayor, 12B.
12, that's what I said, and she told me it was her. Oh, so this is the wrong thing you give me. Jeez, trying to embarrass me.
My apologies, Mr. Mayor.
Consider the deed and the development agreement attendant to the sale of the old bus depot at 630 North Last Chance Gulch. Director Hoggan?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, at the administration meeting, Commissioner Olafland reported on a meeting that was held between city staff and the developer, Rex, Rex Sealy, representative, in that the development agreement was discussed with regard to the purchase of the bus depot and also the deed, the deed restrictions that would be placed on the deed. All parties agreed to the improvements moving forward, so staff is here right now to request that the City Commission approve the deed and the development agreement attendant to the sale of the property located at 630 Last Chance Gulch. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have with regard, and the City Attorney is also here. He was the one who assisted in the drafting of the development agreement and the deed.
Thank you, Director. Comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question.
Please.
I'm not a developer or a realtor, so please forgive me. Can you tell me on, in, in the special warranty deed page, and it talks about during the 10 years following the certificate of occupancy, that the maximum resale price of each workforce housing unit must be the lesser of the base price plus, et cetera, et cetera? What would the base price be?
Mr. Mayor, could I have the City Attorney, I believe the base price is the sales price, and initially, it was sold, when it's initially sold. But if that is not correct, Mr. Joden can progress.
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, that's correct.
And, Mr. Mayor, and that, that will come back to us when they are done, or how, how will we know that?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, so this is a, a cap on how much an eligible buyer can sell the, one of the two, or if we get to three, workforce housing units. So, it's whatever they, they paid for it, the eligible amount, 120% of the area median income, plus 1.5% per year. So, if they own it for three or four years after buying it, they can sell it with that little bit of increment. They can't sell it for anything more.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the deed and development agreement attendant to the sale of the property located at 630 Last Chance Gulch, formerly known as the old bus depot.
Second. Let's be moving second. And Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, just a comment on it. This is sort of knock-on-wood, the final step in a pretty long but good process. I think the developer might have different ideas at some points during the process, but overall, I, I think what we've learned from this is that there's an interest in doing this type of development downtown, an interest in the new downtown zoning code, an interest in building condos on top of retail spaces, and that the city can be a catalyst in that development and a partner in that development. We had, as I said before, multiple other proposals with similar concepts, and from the chats that I've had with bankers or other developers that have been on the sidelines watching this process, their encouragement is, get out there and do this again. This was a good thing, there's, there's an appetite for it, and so, we need to just keep pushing as hard as we can to keep finding the mechanisms to encourage people to do this. This is taxable value, this is how we grow the general fund, this is how we grow increment, this is how we make for a vibrant downtown. So, it, it weds fiscal stability for the city, it weds downtown development, it brings in bodies into our downtown. This is, this is the type of economic development we want for our city, so I'm glad we've been part of this project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other from the Commissioner? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Is everyone in the public wants to address the Commission? Is there any public comment from the public? If not, this meeting is adjourned.